Ready?
Yes.
We're gonna get started. If you can all rise for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlafer?
Here.
Mrs. LaFois? Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
I'd like to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 2nd, 2020. At this time, I would like to request a motion to designate temporary mayor.
I'll make a motion to designate Sandy Diglio as temporary mayor.
I'll second that motion.
On motion of Mr. Schlafer, seconded by Mr. Flynn, motion to designate Sandra Diglio as temporary mayor. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois? Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Diglio, you may take over.
At this time, I will accept nominations for the mayor position.
I would like to nominate Sandy Diglio for mayor.
I will second that.
Are there any other nominations? I will need a motion for that nomination.
I will make a motion. I will make a motion to nominate Sandy Diglio as mayor.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Swearing in, ma'am?
Swearing in?
Yeah.
Yes.
For the record, Councilman LaFois has joined us.
Joni, do you like to join us, please? Joan? Before the Bible?
Sandy, your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand.
Repeat after me. I, your name?
I, Sandra Diglio.
Do solemnly swear?
Do you tell? Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same and to the governments?
To the same and to the governments?
Established in the United States and in this state?
Established in the United States and in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform all of the duties?
And justly perform all of the duties?
Of the office of mayor?
Of the office of mayor?
And according to the best of my ability?
In accordance with the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Congratulations. If you want to do this, you better jump in. If you want to do it.
Okay, now that I'm officially mayor, I will accept nominations for the position of deputy mayor. Do I have a nomination?
I'll nominate Dan Flynn for deputy mayor.
I'll second.
At this time, I would like a motion for the deputy mayor position for Dan Flynn.
I'll make a motion to select Dan Flynn as deputy mayor.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes.
Is my sister Laura in the audience?
I, and state your name.
I, Daniel G. Flynn.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution?
Of the State of New Jersey?
Of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the same?
To the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established?
Established?
In the United States?
In the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform?
All the duties of the office?
All the duties of the office?
Deputy mayor?
Deputy mayor?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God?
At this time, are there any comments by Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Diglio. On behalf of all Newton employees, professionals, and volunteers, I want to wish Mayor Diglio and Deputy Mayor Flynn the very best of success in their leadership roles. And I look forward to working with them and all council members in continuing the great progress we have made towards making Newton a better place to live, work, and visit. The work we perform on a daily basis is critical to the long-term economic success and vitality of the entire county and region. This is a responsibility we take very seriously, and we look forward to carrying out the policies and objectives of the governing body for 2020. I wish all of you in attendance the very best of health, happiness, and success. And to the good people of the town of Newton, I pray for your prosperity and a safe and enjoyable new year. Thank you, and may God continue to bless the town of Newton. Thank you, mayor.
Are there any comments from council members?
None from me tonight.
Helen?
Yeah, Sandy, I just want to wish you the best of luck this coming year. We have so many great things already in motion. It's gonna be a very productive year for the town of Newton. It's so wonderful to see so many people here tonight. We have so many things to celebrate, as I know we will later on in the agenda. Certainly wonderful to see members of our police department here, for good reason, of course. Lots of good things going on. I know it's gonna be a great year in the town of Newton. Thank you for your continued support last year and the last 18 months. Wish you the best of luck, and on to 2020.
Thank you, Helen. Dan?
First off, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody here. Thank you to my council colleagues for, you know, a successful last several years of working together. Thank you for your support in the nomination in the position of deputy mayor. Some people might be wondering why I didn't stick with the normal succession of becoming deputy mayor to mayor. And I would answer that by saying that it's not about me. It's about the town of Newton and what's best for the town of Newton. There's been a couple changes in my professional career and family life, and it hasn't allowed me. I know the obligations of being mayor, and it's very time-consuming. It's a very important position, and it requires a lot of time in town. And that I wasn't able to offer. And I asked my colleagues if I could continue the leadership role as deputy mayor and support the mayor, the new mayor, Sandy Diglio, who I've worked with for years in her new leadership role. And she will do a fantastic job. And the progress that we've been continuing on for years will not stop. It will not, it will not falter. It will continue. I'm very excited for 2020. We have an entirely new leadership role in our wonderful police department that continues to impress. And the countless development projects throughout the county. So I just say, all eyes are on Newton in 2020. And great things are to be had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. On behalf of my fellow council members and myself, I would like to thank each of you for attending this reorganization meeting tonight. As many of you know, I am not one for long speeches, and I doubt very much if anyone really wants to hear one. First, I would like to thank my fellow council members for appointing me to this position. And I look forward to continuing working with them in our efforts to make Newton a great place to live and work. A special thank you to Helen for her many countless hours that she has devoted to the town during her 18 months as mayor, and to Dan, who will continue to serve as deputy mayor. At this point, I would like to recognize Thomas S. Russo, Jr., our town manager, Monica Mayback, our chief financial officer, Lorraine Reed, our municipal clerk, Scott Alheiser, the tax assessor, Jen Dodd, our human resource, and Kent Teetz from our Office of Emergency Management, as well as Mr. Finkel. I would like to recognize and thank all the police officers, the DPW workers, and the municipal employees and volunteers. Special thanks and kudos to the Newton First Aid Squad, volunteers, and our firefighters. All those mentioned above are the heart and soul of the organization which is responsible for the operation of this town. Many thanks to our professionals, including our engineers, planners, auditors, general legal counsel, labor legal counsel, and bond counsel. And a special thank you to retired Police Chief Mike Richards for all his many hours of service to the town, the community, and the clear program. Thank you so much, Mike. Finally, I want to thank... Finally, I want to thank my friends who have been there for me. What would I ever do without my best friend Joan Current and the Carlson's? Most important, I want to thank my sons, Phil, Steve, and Paul, as well as their families for their constant support. As some of you know, I just returned from almost three weeks in Oregon, during which time my beautiful granddaughter Amber Joy was born on December 27th. I am now the proud grandma of seven grandchildren. As in the past and always, I want to thank my late husband, Phil, for always encouraging me to be the best I could, lifting me up and loving me through our many years together. At our December meeting, Mayor Helen graciously reviewed the 2019 projects and accomplished goals. Therefore, I will not repeat them. Instead, I will state the 2020 goals which the council developed for the town manager. There are six altogether and include: the exploration of new and better use of technology; to organize track and report to the council on social media and website analysis; to explore the expansion of the website to include business videos, cross-promotion marketing, real-time activities, business directory, parking information, and links to nonprofits and resources for stigma-free recognitions; the continuation of the work on development and redevelopment projects, which include many in this town and are very important to its development; and to develop successful planning for both the police and DPW departments. In addition to the goals set by the council, I know Tom has developed a list on his own, and I promised a short speech, so I'm not going to mention his long list. Many of you know I've been involved in our community since I arrived in 1978. I strongly encourage others to take part as well. As always, I maintain an open-door policy, and I will welcome your comments and suggestions. I strongly believe in listening to the public, as it is the public that I serve. In conclusion, I would like to thank all of you for taking part in this recognition, and I wish all of you a very happy and healthful new year. Thank you. This time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on the items unless a council member saw a request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, will you please review all the resolutions?
Resolution 1, designating banks as depositories for 2020. Resolution 2, town manager as hearing officer in all matters of dispute. Resolution 3, legal newspapers. Resolution 4, newspapers that will receive notice for Open Public Meetings Act. Resolution 5, schedule of council meetings. Resolution 6, establish the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes. Resolution 7, officials to sign checks. Resolution 8, CFO to sell bond anticipation notes. Resolution 9, assessor, attorney, and manager to act on behalf of the town for tax appeals. Resolution 10, mayor to the planning board. Resolution 11, deputy mayor to the planning board. Resolution 12, cancellation of small balances. Resolution 13, approval of purchases through state contracts and co-ops. Resolution 14, recognizing town events and town-endorsed events. Resolution 15, compliance with United States EEOC. Resolution 16, Catherine Walker as Action Alliance Coordinator. Resolution 17, Adam Voe as Municipal Recycling Coordinator, establishing petty cash fund. Resolution 18, 19 is redevelopment team. 20 is emergency planning committee. 21, Teresa Schlosser as tax search officer. Matthew Dixon as Board of Ed liaison. 22, Jason Schlafer, EDC liaison. 23, Mayor Diglio to historic. 24, reaffirming current fund balance policy. 25, 26 is the water sewer utility fund balance policy. Jenny Rafferty as Clean Communities Coordinator. 27, 28 is my appointment of the special police officers. 29 is the auditor for 2020. Resolution 30 is the auditor for Lo Sap. Resolution 31 directs the tax collector to sell municipal liens. Resolution 32 is contract with Dave Simmons for water engineer. Resolution 33 is a temporary budget. Resolution 34 is various attorneys. Resolution 35 is Jay Caldwell for planner. Resolution 36 is Keith Mitchell for insurance agent. Vicki Hall Romer to the planning board as a regular member. 37, other reappointments is resolution 38, Fred Margron sewer engineer. 39, Mike Hollenstein for appraisal services is resolution 40. Joyce Franklin as senior citizen coordinator. 41, Excel Environmental for environmental engineering is 42. McManaman in Scotland for redevelopment and bond council. And resolution 44 is bills and vouchers. After we do consent, mayor, we'll have one resolution as an add-on.
Do I have any members that wish to have any removed for discussion?
No.
If not, I would like a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll offer a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn and a second by Jason Schaffer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. At this time, I need a motion to add Resolution 45, 2020, a resolution authorizing an emergency purchase of a sewer communiter at the Sparta Ava pump station.
Make a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Schaffer and a second by Councilman Dixon. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. At this time, I appoint town manager...
Mayor, we need a vote on the resolution itself. You need to have that moved. Motion.
I'll offer Resolution 45 dash 2020.
Second.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman LaFois and a second by Councilman Dixon.
And mayor, I'll read into the record the purpose of the project.
Please do.
The communiter is a grinding device typically installed at the inlet to a pump station or treatment plant. Its purpose is to grind material in the raw sewage to a small size so it can be pumped or passed through the treatment components at a plant without damaging or clogging them. It's generally made from multiple hardened steel counter-rotating blades driven by either hydraulics or an electric motor. The best analogy is to think of it as the teeth of the pump station. Without it, larger solids and rags are getting into the wet well of the station and have the potential of causing pump clogs and sewer line blocks. It's a pretty simple yet vital piece of a pump station's operation. That was from our sewer engineer, Fred Margron.
Sure, everybody very much enjoyed the...
And understood it.
That's what I bring to the table.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes. At this time, I will appoint Thomas Russo as the Class II representative to the Newton Planning Board.
Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. And now, for what most of you have come here for, the swearing-in of our officers. Can I please have Police Chief Robert Osborne?
While Bob comes up with his family, I'll read into the record Chief Osborne's biography. Chief Robert E. Osborne, Jr. was born and raised in Newton to Robert and Margaret Osborne, the fifth of five children. He attended Newton Public Schools and graduated from Newton High in 1983. In 1986, he graduated from the County College of Morris with an associate's degree and from York College of Pennsylvania in 1988 with a bachelor of science degree, both in criminal justice. Shortly thereafter, he was hired by the Newton Police Department as a full-time police dispatcher and crossing guard. In May of 1990, he was hired as a police officer by Chief Larry Rowmines. And in December of that year, he graduated from the Somerset County Police Academy, where he was the recipient of the Chief Richard R. Ryan Physical Fitness Award for attaining the highest level of physical fitness during recruit training and the State of New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice Certificate of Merit Award for being the recruit who, in the opinion of class members, displayed those qualities of scholarship and leadership that are indicative of exceptional future professional performance in law enforcement. For the next decade, he worked in the patrol division while also serving as the department's DARE officer before being assigned to the Detective Bureau in 2000. Chief Osborne then became the department's first school resource officer and community policing officer before being promoted to sergeant in 2002. Subsequently, he advanced to the rank of lieutenant in 2006 and was the operations division's commander for the last 13 years, where his responsibilities included scheduling and supervision of the patrol division, Oprah Police Records custodian, liaison for the municipal and state courts, and manager of the departmental performance evaluation system. He also conducted internal affairs investigations, accident report review, and supervised special events. Chief Osborne is a certified field training officer, a public information officer, and past treasurer of the Sussex County PBA Local 138. He presently resides in Wantage with his wife Karen and their two sons, Trey and Kale.
Hi, your name? Please state your name.
I, Robert E. Osborne, Jr.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the same?
To the same?
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people?
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially?
And justly?
And justly?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of the office of Police Chief?
Of the office of Police Chief?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability?
So help me God?
So help me God?
All right, so Chief Osborne will stay with the mayor, and we'll do our next round. If I could have Lieutenant Monaco come forward? Yeah, sure. Go to you.
I've already just a few notes here just to refer to. First off, I would like to thank the council and the town manager for their trust and confidence in me and being selected as the 11th Chief for the town of Newton. It's not something that I take lightly. It's something that I'm very appreciative of, and I thank you for that. And most importantly, tonight I want to thank my family. I want to thank my family, my wife Karen, my son Trey, and my son Kale. They've been patient, loving, understanding, and supporting throughout this whole process and throughout my career. And I'm so lucky to have them in my life. Next, I want to thank my parents, Bob and Margaret Osborne. Unfortunately, they've since passed. But I know that they raised me with a strong conviction. And they taught me what was important in life. And for that, I'm very grateful. To my extended family that's here tonight, along with my friends, my neighbors, and my fellow police officers and police chiefs, I can say that. Both past and present, when I'm looking around, I see a lot of present, but I also see a lot of past. And the present may not know the past, but I'm kind of a link to both. But I'm fortunate to have you all here tonight. It means a lot to me. It really does, that you took the time out of your schedules to share in this moment and be here for me. And your friendship is not something I take for granted and something that I value tremendously. So thanks for coming tonight. I also want to take the time to acknowledge the members of the Newton Police Department, again, both past and present, for their daily work that they do every day, day in, day out. I don't think they get the credit that they deserve. And I know what these guys do every day, and girls. And I'm appreciative of that. And when I say the police department, I don't just mean the police officers, the dispatchers, the secretarial staff, the civilian employees, and everybody that works here in this building, here at 39 Trinity Street. When I've been here for 31 years, I've got to know a lot of these people very well. And I consider myself very, very fortunate to work amongst them. They say a leader is only as good as the people he's lucky enough to serve with. And I'm very, very fortunate to work with the people right here that you see in front of you and around you. At this time, I'd also like to recognize Chief Michael Richards, if you could come up, and retiring Lieutenant Mark Zappa, if you could come up. I know this breaks from tradition. They have no idea that I was gonna do this. But I'm just gonna say a few words. We've been friends and coworkers for a long time here. We were patrolmen that ended up living together in the same house. And who knew, fast forward down the line, 20, 25 years, that we'd be in the positions that we are. We've navigated a lot of tough times together, and we made it through to the other side. At least two of us have. And I want to say personally, to thank them right here in a public forum for the time that they've invested, the efforts that they've made, the sacrifices that they've made, and most importantly, the contributions to their community. They deserve a round of applause for all that they have done. And I just want to end with saying that being raised in this town is very special to me. To come back here and be chief in a town that you were born and raised is something that I value and I will always treasure. And I appreciate it so much for your confidence in selecting me in this. And just in closing, I just want to offer the best And just in closing, I just want to offer the best to Mike Richards and to Mark Zappa in their retirement and their future endeavors, and I wish nothing but health and happiness for their families. Thank you.
All right, next we'll have the swearing-in of Michael Monaco. Michael is the son of Joseph and Rosalie Monaco of Newton, New Jersey, and brother to Joseph Monaco of Columbia, New Jersey, and Janet Monaco Crocker of Southbury, Connecticut. He currently lives in Andover Township with his longtime girlfriend Wendy Huffman. Michael was born and raised in Newton and attended the Miriam Avenue and Holstead Street Schools before graduating from Newton High School in 1988. He went on to attend the Mars and Sussex County Community Colleges before graduating with a bachelor's degree in sociology/criminal justice from Bloomfield New Jersey College in 1993. Michael started his law enforcement career as a police dispatcher with the Andover Township Police Department in January of 1990 before being hired as a police dispatcher by Newton Police Chief James Kilduff in February of 1992. In July of 1993, Michael graduated from the Cape May County Police Academy as a Class II Special Police Officer. He continued to work as both a dispatcher and special officer until he was hired as a full-time police officer in June of 1996 by Chief Michael Meeker. Michael graduated from the 193rd Municipal Police Class at the New Jersey State Police Academy at Seagirt, New Jersey in June of 1996 and served as a patrolman for the next several years. In June of 2000, Chief Meeker assigned Michael to the multi-agency Sussex County Narcotics Task Force, where he worked as a detective. He remained there until December 2001 before returning to regular patrol duty. In May of 2005, Michael was assigned by Chief John Thomas Sula to the Detective Bureau where he remained until March of 2006. In March of 2006, Michael was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant and reassigned back to patrol where he remained until October of 2010. In October of 2010, Michael was reassigned to the DB by Chief Michael Richards. As the detective sergeant, he remained in that capacity until April of 2011. Michael has been involved in numerous duties and assignments, which include being the lead firearms instructor, a drug recognition expert, and field training officer. Michael has expressed that he is excited to face the challenges presented by the promotion to Police Lieutenant, and is confident the transition will be made easier with the cooperation of the high-quality men and women of the Newton Police Department. Their devotion to public service continues to be paramount and is the backbone of the police culture here in Newton.
Please raise your right hand and state your name. I, Michael Monaco. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of Police Lieutenant?
Perform all the...
Duties?
Duties. The office of Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I had a speech that I thought, "Oh, it'll be easy. I'll just rattle it off." And start seeing faces of people that you care about. It's pretty humbling. I'll try to get my way through it. It's not real long, but I'd first like to thank the town council members, the town manager, the mayor, Chief Mike Richards, Chief Bob Osborne, and my fellow men and women of the Newton Police Department. With that, their ongoing support and cooperation, this exciting transition that our department is going through would be extremely difficult. Thank you to Wendy for her continued support of me and her understanding of the many difficulties and challenges associated with this type of career. She's been with me every step of the way. To my parents for their unwavering support of me, even when they didn't exactly agree with my decision to enter law enforcement. To my family and friends, a couple of my buddies came from a long way away to be here. Thank you for coming to celebrate this grand occasion, and I thank you all. Thank you. If I could, I just wanted to say a few words in regards to Lieutenant Monaco. I've known him and his family for many years. He was also born and raised here in Newton, and we have a lot of similar shared experiences, I'm sure, growing up. I can tell you that he was also raised in a family with close family ties and a work ethic that was demonstrated by him, for him, by his parents, and that is an attribute that he has taken on from his parents. And he's very diligent when it comes to work, and something that you can always rely on. His strength lies from patrol, and by that I mean he was a patrol officer, and I know he did other things in his career, but that's where I think his strength lies. And then he was a patrol sergeant. And it's not by accident that in that role, he was one of the few people here in the department that was selected as a field training officer, a job that he and I both take very seriously, because that really dictates the future of our department. And he has a knack for doing that, and leading, and mentoring, and guiding our young officers to develop into strong police officers, not just within the department, but within the community. So when this position opened up, it made sense that he would be the officer that should supervise the Patrol Division as the operations supervisor. He has worked very hard over the years. This is something he has pursued, and he'll tell you that if you ask him. But it's nice to see someone work through the difficulties that you encounter in the course of your career. Sometimes your timeline doesn't coincide with the town's timeline, with the department's timeline, but he stayed the course, he stuck with it, and he persevered. And for that, you're being rewarded tonight as Lieutenant. Congratulations.
All right, next to be sworn in, Michael Walansky. Michael was born and raised in New York to Margaret and Robert Walansky. Michael attended high school at Floral Park Memorial High and college at Binghamton University with a major in accounting. Michael moved to Newton in 1995 and worked as a financial analyst in Princeton and in Mountain Lakes. In January 2001, Michael was sworn in as a full-time police officer by Chief John Thomas Sula. Michael was assigned to the Patrol Division. During his time in the Patrol Division, Michael has been involved in community policing initiatives that were focused on bicycle safety, giving talks to the youth corps at Project Self-Sufficiency, serving as the liaison for the Domestic Violence Response Team, and investigating all firearms applications. Michael's brother, Robert, resides in Dix Hills, Long Island, with Michael's sister-in-law, Marie, and nephew, Matthew. Michael married Lisa Perigino in 2012 and instantly was blessed with two stepsons, Michael and Jeffrey, and now five grandchildren.
Michael, please raise your right hand. I, state your name, please.
I, Michael Walansky.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments?
And to the government.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Police Sergeant?
Of the office of Police Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you to the Chief and Lieutenant for setting the bar really high with the speech. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Russo. Thank you, Town Council. Thank you to all my friends, my family, and my work family who are here today. In particular note, my mother, who's always believed in me, and my wonderful wife, Lisa, who quite honestly is the best part of me. So a few weeks ago, Mr. Russo called me into his office, where I was going to find out who was going to be the next sergeant. Needless to say, it was a very long drive in, very stressful, and the reason being is that the other two police officers that I was being considered with, Dan Finkel and Joe DiAnabel, are extremely talented officers, which makes this day all the more humbling for me. So once Mr. Russo told me that I was being promoted, it was an amazing moment, one I will never forget. But what made the moment even better was the fact that Chief Osborne and Lieutenant Monaco were in the room with me. And it was very apropos, because both gentlemen, in addition to former Captain Donna Freo, were three men who've had a great influence over my career. Three men who understood that leadership is not about imposing authority, but instead it's about inspiring greatness. They would never allow me to give anything less than my best, and for that, I will always be indebted to them. So in closing, it is such a wonderful and great honor to be sworn in tonight as a sergeant. But to me, the bigger honor is being sworn in as a sergeant under this administration and coming from the Patrol Division, which I have such a great respect and love for. Thank you so much.
Joseph, I'd like to say also a couple of words about Sergeant Walansky. He took a different path here to the town of Newton. As he said, he came from New York 19 years ago, and since that time has been active in the Patrol Division. As a senior officer, he's always attempted to provide guidance to junior officers and mentor them as they progress. I know I mentioned that with Lieutenant Monaco. It's also true with Sergeant Walansky. Both of them always try to lead the junior officers and advise them whether they're answering questions or whether they're providing advice. He's also not one to shy away from doing work and strives to accomplish the tasks that he's been assigned, most notably DBRT and firearms application. As someone who's done that, that's an undertaking. That's quite an undertaking. Throughout, he has remained detail-oriented and focused on his responsibilities, whether it's conducting investigations, providing presentations numerous to community groups, or handling significant calls for service. He has risen to the occasion. He continues to provide assistance to department members, such as myself, so the agency operates more efficiently and effectively, while concentrating on attaining his goal of becoming an effective supervisor. I know Sergeant Walansky will continue to work hard and put his best foot forward every day, and that will lead him to be regarded as a capable and knowledgeable supervisor. Congratulations.
So I come into the office not too long ago, and Chief Richards walks into my office with a piece of paper in his hand, and I said, "This is not going to be a good day." And I was right, and the chief announced that he was retiring, and to make matters worse, Lieutenant Zappa was retiring. So that's how I started out my Tuesday. And although I was saddened that Mike and Mark would be leaving the organization, I knew this would be an opportunity for other individuals in the department to move forward and advance in their careers. So I began the process of meeting with individuals that would be impacted, individuals that were... And bless you, we're a civil service community, so we have certain guidelines and things we have to work with in terms of lists, and I went through the process. I met with everybody individually, and the thing that struck me through the process was that, you know, a difficult responsibility as the CEO of the organization to pick amongst this group, but boy, was I blessed, and pardon me, but I'm a spiritual person, so I considered myself blessed that I had such a good group of individuals to pick from, because some town managers don't have that luxury. And the thing that kept coming back to me as I was going through the interviews, running scenarios in my head, whether I was at work or home, and I know everybody else was doing the same thing, if I appointed this one, if I promoted that one, right, I just kept running scenarios in my head. But the thing that I kept going back to was character, integrity, and trust. You know, we provide education, we provide training, love, support to our staff. I certainly do that with my employees. But in the end, I had a list for chief, for lieutenant, and for sergeant of people with good character, good integrity, and people I trusted. And whether you were promoted or whether you were not promoted this time around, I want all of you to know that I have great respect for the officers in the department because you have those three qualities, and I wanted to recognize that. And I also wanted to say that, you know, Chief Richards, I thank you for your leadership, Lieutenant Zappa the same, because you made the process easier for me because of the leadership you've exhibited all these years that you gave me, those options and opportunities. And I want to congratulate those that were promoted. I want to thank those that weren't promoted this time around, because there'll be other opportunities in the future. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in the Police Department for serving, for committing your time, your talent, and your treasure to the people of the town, and thank your families as well. I know the stress of this type of career on your families is tremendous, the sacrifices, the uncertainty that comes with these types of positions, and I want you to know that your boss, your council, your community recognizes that commitment, and we love you for it, and we support you, and we're very grateful for the work that you do day in and day out. Thank you.
At this time, I do want to congratulate all of you on your promotions, and thank you, all of you, all the police officers, for the service that you give to this town. Having worked with you with EMS, I know exactly what you go through, well, not exactly, but on EMS calls, but thank you so much for all that you do do. Continuing on, we are now moving to the open portion of the meeting, the open public meeting portion. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say anything? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Anybody?
Yeah, anyone want to say anything?
You each get five minutes to take your time. You're good. Plenty of time.
Well, if no one wishes to say anything, I'll close that portion of the meeting, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:03?
I need a second.
A second motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Helen LaFois and a second by Councilman Schaffler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mayor Diglio?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chief Osborne, we need your route for some photos with the council, please.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you all for coming.